For those people watching this on cable, don't adjust your set. I am not Mayor Serino. I usually sit over there on the right, both figuratively and philosophically. I sit on the right side of the mayor. But I'm Marty Stetson, and this is what we've done for years. We rotate this job when the mayor can't be here, and he's out of town today. We did that by motion, too. It's not something I wrapped up. I would like to start our meeting by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every justice for all.
First order of business is the minutes for the mayor and council meeting. Do I have a motion to approve them?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Is there any discussion? Call for the question? Aye.
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 She can't hear. You gotta speak up, guys. Okay. Okay, the operating phone on hand.
Right here.
I got it here. I get copies of this. Private Marina donations was $333,608. Total operating cash on hand is $439,760.64. The USDA funds to be reimbursed for pre-construction requests pending $61,851.92, which leaves us actually in the bank account as $501,612.56. Hopefully, we'll start getting some... When do we start getting the money from the...
September 30th.
Oh. If we get through the summer, we'll be in much better shape. The total private donations for the Marina, and I think this is kind of neat and kind of important, is $764,231.97. We've spent all of that except that $33,608.56. A lot of that was matching funds. Okay. The next order of business is the payment of the bills. Do I hear a motion for the payment of the bills?
Make a motion that we pay the bills.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna have our police report.
Good evening, council and acting mayor. I'd like to present our report for June of 2018. I'll go down the statistics, a couple of comments, and then any questions. Our administration was 341 hours, and that was 15 percent. Our criminal investigations were 213 at 10 percent. Our accident investigations were five hours at 1 percent. Vehicle patrol, 771, 35 percent. Foot patrol was 192 at 9 percent. Training was 69, 3 percent. Court, six hours at 1 percent. And overtime was 35 at 9 percent. We made 21 adult arrests, and of that, we had 31 separate charges. We broke it down. The most was theft at seven and five traffic, four each for CBS and FOA, three for FTA and MPOP. We had two assaults, one escaped second degree, one failure to evade, and one trespassing.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Escape second... I assume one is if there's force used or something like... That's something new. I never had that.
Yeah, and you know what? I'll be honest with you. I forgot, because I thought it would be a question, but I'm not certain what the...
Whether it's force or not force?
Yeah, I'm not certain, sir.
Okay. Well, it sounds like it when you talk about raping first and second.
Yes, sir, I agree. We had two juvenile charges with assault. That was two assault charges. We had two civil charges, one with an open container and one with littering. Our Part I offenses were seven. We cleared five by arrest, and two were unfounded. Our Part II offenses were 16. We cleared 13 by arrest and three under exceptional means. Motor vehicle citations were 32 issued. We issued 194 warnings, and we had 306 red speed citations. Our overtime was paid for criminal investigation court and shift differential. We had 344 calls for service and broken down. Ward one had 3 percent. Ward two had 28 percent. Ward three had 32 percent. And Ward four had four. And 7 percent were at large. We had the busiest day of the week was Friday, and Tuesday and Wednesday were pretty close to it. And our busiest time for calls of service was 11 to 11:59, and that was followed pretty closely by 8 to 9 o'clock. Regarding kind of what's going on with the police department, we unfortunately did have a few weeks ago, it was like about July 4th, a computer hack, I guess you would call it. We were up and running within a couple of days, so I thank Tom of the IT for that, and my Sergeant Steve Luzar has also been very involved in that. My lesson learned is turn your computer off every day. So I lost a lot of stuff on my laptop... I mean, not on my laptop, on my desktop that I stored, and that was not backed up. But again, it could have been a whole lot worse, and we've taken every precaution that we can to avoid that happening again. We're having a couple of issues with vehicles. Now, on our second one, it looks like it may be an engine cam lifter thing. Again, we had one that I mentioned to you before. We got lucky on that one. We're hoping we're gonna get lucky on this one. But I'm just bringing it to your attention because it's something that I expect is gonna happen as our cars get older. This is the third year we've not replaced... We were getting rid of an old vehicle, replacing the vehicle, and because of budget constraints, we've not done that. So I'm not gonna be surprised if our maintenance budget creeps up on us this year. And lastly, I would just like to bring to your attention, it was mentioned really inaccurately about the police getting a step when we're talking about the budget stuff. But specifically, Officer Pavon did get a promotion to first class, so he's now patrolling first class as of last month. And that concludes my report.
Are there any questions from the audience for the police department? This is your chance to get to talk to the chief. Well, nobody wants to talk to you.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Now, this is a true pleasure for me. I'm gonna honor Colin Steed mainly for his athletic ability, but he's much more than that. And if I could, just let me have a few minutes, I'll explain what I'm talking about. I've had an occasion to spend time with him and his brother Mitch. Not a lot of time, but some time. It doesn't take much time to realize what a really, truly nice person he is. He's got it all together. And he didn't get there by himself, by the way. Nobody does. I always say raising a family is like growing a garden. You can put the seeds in the ground, but if you don't cultivate it, if you don't water it, if you don't nurture it, if you don't take care of it, you're liable to have a patch of weeds rather than a garden. It's obvious to me that Colin and his brother really got the care and cultivation that they need. You just have to spend a few minutes with him, and you would realize that. So I know we're recognizing him for quite an achievement, athletic achievement, but I think he deserves more than that. Sometimes we worry about what's gonna happen to this country with our young people, and then you meet people like Colin, and you realize that, you know, we're gonna be all right. This guy's got it together, and there's gotta be more of them out there. So I'm very happy, Colin. If you'll just meet me halfway out here front, I'll read this proclamation to you. If my glasses hold up. You can get right up here where the people can get your picture. Town of Chestertown proclamation proclaiming July 16, 2018, is Colin Steed Day in Chestertown. Whereas the town of Chestertown would like to take the opportunity to celebrate an incredible accomplishment by one of its native sons, a young man who has accomplished a feat with his hockey team that has risen to national recognition. And whereas the mayor and council wishes to recognize this accomplishment, which represents so many hours, days, weeks, and years of practice and dedication by this youth. And whereas it was evident Colin Steed was destined to stinging ice hockey, carrying a hockey stick most everywhere from time he would walk to learn to skate at the age of three. Colin played in-house hockey in Newark as a pond peddler and then became a Delaware Duck at the age of eight. He has been playing year-round hockey ever since, traveling along the East Coast from Connecticut to Virginia. And when I mentioned the parents, you know, he didn't get there by himself. At that age, you don't drive, so those parents took him to these things. Whereas Colin Steed, a right-winger in his Delaware Duck ice hockey team, achieved every young ice hockey player's dream of an undefeated season at the 2018 USA Hockey Youth National Tournament in Green Bay, Wisconsin. Okay. Colin, a grinder. Any ice hockey fan can say you're a grinder. It's known for the wicked checking abilities, but also for their hard work and dedication. Had the first gold of the Nationals of the Ducks... He made the first gold of the Nationals for the Ducks, making the whole tournament that much sweeter. And whereas Colin works nearly as hard as... Nearly as hard. We could have left that nearly out, too. As hard as other aspects of his life, attending Kent County High School, and then a STEM science step-down with an engineering math program, a member of the National Honor Society, and a DJ at 90.5 WKHS, Kent County High School's radio station. He's also been elected Kent County's school student body president for his senior year, which is coming up. And now, therefore, be proclaimed that I, Mayor Chris Serino, who files this proclamation, July 16, 2018, Colin Steed Day in Chestertown, celebrating Colin and the Delaware Ducks on their national title, and encouraging all the citizens to join in the celebration of the achievements of this one, Kent County's own Colin Steed. And I always tell the people who get this, you can park free downtown now. Wait, wait. You get the key to the city, and later, after the meeting, you wanna ask Mr. Ingersoll what you're supposed to do with this key. He's supposed to have to do with it. He'll give back.
Open and molten.
I got it. We're good. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Colin.
Good job, honey.
Love ya.
Did you ride a Steed in?
My wife wanted to know if she should drive two cars, because she didn't want to stay. I said, "I'll move the meeting along rather fast." So she has to stay. We're in one car. Town managers' report.
Well, I just have one announcement. We have the TEPPRA hearing coming up in August 6th, and that's the Heron Point Bond Refinancing Issue. I think Linda wants to make a remark here about the passing of Owen McCoy under my report. Would you do that now?
Unfortunately, we lost Owen McCoy. Was it July 5th? I think it was. His service will be August 4th at 2:00 at St. Paul's. And I had asked Bill if we could commemorate Owen's years of service to the farmer's market by putting a plaque and making a dedication when we put the plaque in the farmer's market.
I think an eight-by-eight plaque right centered in where the farmer's market is held would be the most appropriate thing to have. You can get an awful lot of words on that, and if we need to go bigger, we should go bigger. I'm sure there are people that would want to help with that.
It goes in the walkway or the...
Goes flush with the brick. Solid bronze. And you see them even outside this building, their most lasting thing that we can come up with.
Yeah, I read the remarks and so forth about him on, both on Kent County News's posting and the Spies posting. He was held in real esteem by an awful lot of people. I mean, he was a very talented person. A lot of people didn't know he could do all those things. And I've known him for 30 years, and I didn't know he could do all those things. I used to go down Churchill and watch him in a play once in a while. He would do that.
One other thing I wanted... We have this grant deadline this week for the Build Program, which is essentially a U.S. Department of Transportation discretionary grant to help cities with rural areas also with their roads. And we need that badly, as everyone knows who sat through our budget process. So I think we are gonna be asking for $4.5 million. We have received the help of Chesapeake Charities. Linda Kohler is the grants writer who's joined Case DeMoy and myself. Today, I got a lot of help from Jen in quantifying the streets that we want to do, and it's an awful lot of streets, probably more than... That we want to do than would be left. So we have great hopes for that, and should meet the deadline. We're meeting again with Linda Kohler tomorrow, who'll be in town. She's an awfully nice person, and she's thought of things that I really hadn't thought of that might help with making the grant stronger. And that's really all I have. You're gonna bring up your legislative thing?
Yes.
I have...
Okay, yeah.
I wanted to ask you... Usually, he gives us an update on the Marina and...
Oh, I'd like to give you an update. I think it's time now. I went and took a long look at it with Case the other day. It's really time for the council to go visit that again individually and stand inside that interpretive center. They're building the decks outside. We've got a lot of things out of the way now, and the docks going out, the bulkhead being finished in front of the Fish Whistle. It's time to take another tour. Or anyone else that really wants to do that will take you down there, sort of a hard hat area. But I guess another way you can see it is to go to the Fish Whistle. But we have this exciting thing coming up with the main large metal building has been put up for sale or taken away, and I think we're gonna have a lot of people inquiring at that. I think that's coming up pretty soon, actually. We put it on Facebook before, the other metal building, which is where the interpretive center stands now, and we were shocked and amazed and happy that somebody took it away for free. So if we get that or better on this large building, which is outstanding building. But please, schedule a time that perhaps Case or I take you down there and see the view and imagine what it's gonna be like in sort of an interim fashion.
I will say, I get most of my view from the Fish Whistle when I go down there, but I have been down there and walked around as best I could. I've been in the interpretive center.
Thursday, look.
It's coming along. Okay. Is that your end of your...
You do that when the mugs are cheaper, though, don't you, Thursday nights?
I go on Thursdays, that's right.
That's what I thought. Now, I'm done. Thanks.
Two-dollar drafts. I only drink one, but otherwise... Okay, mayor's report. My gosh. Are we gonna set some kind of record?
No, we haven't. We missed it.
Oh, that's right. David. Okay, I'm sorry. You've got an hour, David.
Just a few minutes here. When we presented this, or not... We presented, when I raised it earlier about doing this request to Maryland Municipal League to have them take up for their legislative agenda. Marty, you were kind enough to suggest that the entire council should endorse this, and I've appreciated that. One interesting follow-on to that is a couple of weeks ago, when I was at the farmer's market and talking to Jay Jacobs, and he said that if we can get Maryland Municipal League to support it, he will support it as well. And an interesting thing, we all know that the counties are kind of divided between the Shall counties, there's seven of them, and 14 May counties, we're unfortunately in the May category. Almost nobody knows where that comes from. Okay? And I've been asking, finally, I found Jim Peck, who's kind of the senior researcher. We were there for his retirement there. But I've been trying to reach him before he finally packed his bags. And in '82, they would put forward a proposal that all of the counties would be mandated, that they provide a tax differential. And it was written as it's encouraged. It was not required. They came back again the next year and wrote it in as a resolution that all counties shall provide this. And this passed 104 to 10 in the House of Delegates, and then the Senate got hold of it, and they tore it to shreds. And you could see where they struck out the strongest arguments. And one by one, representatives from different areas said, "Well, we know best what's for our area, and so we want to be put in this May category." And so it started out with all of them shall provide a differential, and two-thirds of them switched the other way. Given the fact that nobody remembers where that came from, I think it's high time that it be presented again. I'm hopeful that we can. Initially, they said, "Well, this is an experiment and see how it works." And I don't think it's worked very well. I think that it's incredibly inequitable for some towns.
It's worked well for some counties.
It has worked well for some counties, but...
I could not believe, when I asked around, how much money some of the towns get from these counties. Ours was a pick and little pittance.
Annapolis gets 25 million.
Now, it's nothing. You can't get any less than nothing.
Anyway, so I'm pleased that Jay Jacobs has said that he will support us on this. Jen, you put back in the typos that I had...
That was the last version that you sent me. Yes, I believe that that's the corrected version.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I don't know what the procedure is in terms of having a sign this or how to...
Yeah, I did speak with Bill about that earlier today, and since it's not due yet, I thought what I could do is get the minutes out, and then I could do a separate page with all of the signatures, or you could authorize the mayor to sign it.
Okay, the only thing is that this is the last meeting before the 27th, so we don't have another council.
Oh, it's due July 27th.
It's due July 27th.
Well, then, it was... All you had to do is enable the mayor to sign it by passing it tonight or...
Okay, okay.
I read it this afternoon. I think it's got everything we needed to say.
Okay.
And so I think you just need a motion to submit this.
I'll entertain a motion from either one of you two, since there's nobody else here.
Go ahead. I'll second it.
Okay. I make a motion that, on behalf of Chestertown, we submit this request to Maryland Municipal League that they propose legislation to require or mandate provision of a tax rebate or tax differential for the municipalities.
I'll second it.
All right, the motion's been entered and seconded. Is there any board discussion? I call for the vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ananamous. Okay. Now, what do we do? We go to ward reports?
I thought that was the beginning of a ward report, right there.
Well, I'll go ahead. I'll go last. It really says mayor's report, but I'll just start since you went last time. You have anything else?
All's fine in the first.
Okay. How about you, Linda?
All I have to announce is Legacy Days coming up in August, and I'm sure it'll be as hot as it has been every other year. And Kay, you're here. And I was in Old Town Alexandria last weekend, which is similar to Chestertown, and they're building on the waterfront, and they have a lot of nuisance flooding and other flooding. And I brought a map, so I thought this would be... I know we have some of Chestertown, but the ones that we have in the historical society aren't as detailed as this one, and I don't know how much it would cost, and it doesn't really have to be as big, but this is an idea. And Alexandria was packed with people, literally.
Yeah, we do. Main Street and DCA together pay for a visitor's map that does have all the shops and restaurants listed in the historical sites, but I'd love to take them, because here we reevaluate the design and the information in it, so happy to look at that.
It was packed. And they had an ice cream parlor, which hopefully we'll have one sooner than later. So that's it.
Okay, well, I'm gonna give the mayor... First, I want to mention this. I know it was in the minutes that the mayor mentioned it, but there's 32... 35 teams, 35 teams, and we came in second. That's not too shabby. I was very happy with the team, everybody, especially since we lost the first two games. It's tough to come down when you lose two, and we came back and we ended up second, so kadoos to the botsey team. Now, ward report. News from the dog park. First off, the Friends of the Chestertown Dog Park gave $1,000 to the town for the health maintenance of the town. I hope there can be more next year, and it probably will be, but we have pending some building of some exercise equipment that Jay Yurkis is going to build for us, and we're gonna furnish the material. I don't know how much the cost is gonna be, so we were hesitant to commit too much. But the people who come to that dog park are very, very generous, and this is an example I want. I had a guy come up to me who comes regularly and said, he's in the tree business, he said, works with trees. Your trees need to be pruned and mulched, the one inside the dog park, and I would like to volunteer to do that. And I said, "You gonna pay for the mulch?" And he said, "Yes." I said, "Okay." And we, you know, we got approval. Well, he did that. He comes in the evenings, and he worked every... A number of evenings, and one of the other dog park people told me that he was there on the Fourth of July working. I don't know about the Fourth of July here, but I was down in Bethany, and it was hot on the Fourth of July, and he was working, because he has a regular job. So I think that... We have Bill, who's the weed man, keeps the weed down along Dog Park, and of course, people continue to donate. The Friends of the Chestertown Dog Park also bought some pavers, put in there because the entrance way was flooding. Well, then, people were complaining that they were a tripping hazard, and our Tom Sappington come up with the idea that it worked out perfectly. He brought in some more stone and built the stone up to the sizes of the paving, so there's no more stumbling. And hopefully, if we ever get any rain, we'll see whether that works or not. I'm sure it will. That's what I thought we should have done in the first place. And I think that's about it for the fourth ward. Other than we already know, everybody knows in all the wards, we need some work done on our roads. If the county would just... I don't know whether you saw my posting on the one, but one guy said, well, one of the commissioners said, "Well, we should give it back to the people." I said, "Fine. You give it back to the people, and I'll do some motion that we reduce our taxes, that amount of money, or whatever that would equal to." But I don't know whether that... It's not gonna happen this year, that's for sure. All right, now, we're to the point where you people in the audience get to say whatever you'd like to say. What do you mean, hurry up? I only get to do this about once every four years. I'm gonna milk it for every minute I can get. Okay. All right. Anybody in the audience have anything? We didn't have anybody petitionous to say anything.
I've been out of town, and so I don't know all the details, but I know Crazy Days, their merchants are doing that, I believe, on the 27th.
27th, that's right. And 28th Saturday. 27th until like 9:00 at night, and then the 28th during the day.
So they're really kind of revamping it, so I just encourage...
Well, they changed the name, too.
Yeah, you gotta buy around. It's no longer Crazy Days. You have to buy around because of that.
I have to buy around?
For anybody who says that word that you just said that used to be called. I almost did it myself.
Is that the reason they changed? Is that the reason they changed it?
I forgot what they called it, I should know what they just went in and...
Well, it garnered some comments, too. People wanted to leave it alone, don't do anything with it.
I'm not buying any round, I'm not saying that.
I missed that part, I'm afraid to.
Any questions from the press?
That is milking it, that is. I gotta go. I left my car running, because I felt we'd be out even quicker than this.
All right.
Norman, did you want to say anything on... Kay.
Okay, I'll introduce a motion. I mean, I'll entertain a motion, I've been over there too long.
To adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well done.